I'd like to call this meeting of your Newark City Council order. Audit, please call the roll.
Mr. Raff.
Here.
Mr. Ralletta.
Here.
Mr. Blake.
Here.
Mr. Bub.
Here.
Mr. Cos.
Here.
Mrs. Floyd.
Here.
Mr. Frazier.
Here.
Ms. Hall.
Here.
Mr. Johnson.
Here.
And Mr. Marby.
Here.
We have all present this evening. Next on the agenda, we have the invocation by Mr. Johnson, followed by the pledge of allegiance. Mr. Johnson.
We bow our heads. Again, if you have personal concerns, let's have a minute of silence for those, and then Lord, we come to you, and thanks for a beautiful weekend, and thank you for being in a place where you can meet and worship without fear of interruption. Be with us in our deliberations that we can do in freedom. Bless those in need. Be with those who experience many good things. May we ever serve you and be with you. In your name we pray. Amen.
Please join me in the pledge.
Our pledge is to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under our God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. Next on the agenda this evening, we have caucus. That's not for council to discuss anything that might be pertaining to the agenda this evening. Do we have any? Okay. Seeing none, next we have the minutes of our August 15, 2016 council meeting. The motion approved thus. Motion by Mr. Raff, second by Mr. Johnson. Follows and favors signify by saying aye.
Aye.
That's on. That passes. Thank you. We have one, two, three, four, five reports of standing committees this evening. One from Finance, Service, Economic Development, Capital Improvements, and Personnel. Without objection, those will be received and filed. We also have two reports from city officials this evening. One from our auditor, Stephen Johnson. Letter to council that there were no findings in the audit report for the state audit for the year 2015, and no adjustments are required. And the other from our city tax administrator, Barb Jobs. The income tax revenue reports for the period ending August 15, 2016. Without objection, those will also be received and filed. We have a few communications this evening. The first one is Mayor Hall.
Sure. Got a proclamation I'd like to read. Whereas it is with great pride that on Saturday, September 10, 2016, we celebrate the 22nd Annual Lincoln County River Roundup, where citizens come together to participate in a hands-on cleanup of our Lincoln County waterways. Over the years, this extremely effective roundup has gained great momentum. Last year, over 280 volunteers and local leaders bouldered nearly 300 tires, 18 pounds of trash, and 730 pounds of recyclables out of our county waterways and surrounding riverbanks. In collaboration with the Lincoln County River Roundup event, the city of Newark encourages everyone in the community, from families and organizations to public officials and senior citizens, to work together to keep our waterways clean and preserve our natural resources. Now therefore, I, Jeff Hall, mayor of the great city of Newark, do hereby proclaim Saturday, September 10, 2016, as Lincoln County River Roundup Day, and I would like to say just wish them the best on that day, and it's a great, great event, and a good volunteer event. So, thank you.
Very good. Thank you, Mayor. Also on communications, we have the Ohio State University of Newark campus, a letter advertising, or a letter advising council that Senate Bill 310 contains an appropriation to the Ohio State University of Newark campus for capital improvements. Council has 60 days from receipt of this notice to forward any objections or comments regarding the listed projects. Also, we have the Ohio Division of Liquor Patrol, a transfer request from Bar Management, Inc., that's DVA Crazy Joe Z-Pup and Pizza, to I Am Victory DVA Crazy Joe Z-Pup and Pizza, located at 38 and Sheraco Avenue. I think that's suggested it. And the other one is a transfer request from Jackie Tranny, DVA, Asian Fusion, to whatever that is Restaurant, Inc., DVA, located at 1230 West Church Street. Notice how I skipped through most of that. Without objection, those will be received and filed. Next on the agenda this evening, we have comments from citizens. There are two places for citizens' comments. One is now, and one is after the legislation. Just a reminder, this is not a debate with council. This is just an opportunity for you to come up and be heard. Do we have anyone for this first section of citizens' comments? Ma'am?
Here.
Right there, please. Just give us your name and address for the document, please.
Okay. I'm Patty Kutz, the first. And I live at 51 Riverdale Road for 41 years. And I am just here, well, I have a question, if you don't mind. How many of you have ever thrown a tire or something in the river? It's appalling.
Jen back there has, yes.
You've fallen in the river? Don't do that anymore. Anyway, because I've hauled those things in those canoes. Now, I am seriously here to offer my volunteer support to help pass the levy for streets and police. I certainly have talked to Chief Connell, and certainly have driven many roads in this town, and I'm thinking that maybe I can help with that levy. I don't know what the plan is, so if someone needs to, let me know. I did tell David. Is he here? David Rhodes? No. And Bill, and I might be able to offer an opportunity to help pass that thing. That really is it. Thank you.
Thank you, Patty. Anyone else for this first? Ma'am?
My name's Virginia Beach, and originally, council was to have a public hearing about the corner of 21st and Myrtle tonight, and then Autumn called to tell me that had been postponed, but I came in case some of the people didn't get the message that it was postponed. So, since I was here, I thought I would give you some reasons I think it should not be rezoned, and if you have any questions, I'd be glad to answer those. It's an area that is a residential area. If you haven't had a chance, please go up and take a look at it. The zoning says 1621 North 21st Street and 158 Myrtle Avenue. Well, 1621 North 21st Street actually is a home that's on Myrtle Avenue, which is now used as a daycare center. So, it's a residential street, has had no improvement since it's been annexed into the city, so there are no sidewalks, no curbs. People walk up to the corner and turn around and walk back. Children ride their bicycles. People push their baby carriages. It's a residential area. The corner is also a very busy intersection, several accidents. We were told there's no possibility of a traffic light because of the cost involved, so putting a business there would increase that traffic. Sometimes the traffic backs up, particularly if it's a Patty Dance studio night. The traffic backs up past Myrtle Avenue already. So, that's a busy time for them. Also, Planning Commission received a request for a general business zoning, and they thought about that and decided it should be limited business. But, under limited business, if you look, includes such things as, and this is not the whole list, a beer, wine, or food carryout, a beverage or retail drive-through, a bingo hall, a pawn shop, a restaurant or drinking establishment, a convenience store, grocery store, a gas station, a laundromat, automobile sales and repairs. Those don't seem to me to be things that should be in a residential area. Also, they would be directly across from the north entrance to the Westling Church on the other corner. I know the city said they would require a buffer zone there. There's already a buffer zone separating the businesses north of that residential street from the residential street, so now we're talking about going beyond that buffer. And I can attest, since I'm one house away from what they're rezoning, that a buffer zone doesn't protect you from the lights, the noise, the traffic, the smells of the restaurants. You know, the buffer zone doesn't, isn't an answer to separating it from the other things that are in the area. They also said they did not want any more cut-ins off of North 21st Street. So, the proposal is that the cut-ins be off of Myrtle Avenue, which makes it even more concerning that they would do those cut-ins off of Myrtle Avenue, where, for those reasons that I already expressed. When I talked with Dave Rhodes, he said a possibility was to share a driveway with Lee's Chicken and come in that way, which then makes that North Town Court, where Patty's Dance Studio is, even more of a traffic hazard than it already is. It doesn't seem to me like the business needs to be in that area. It's currently zoned for office, and the daycare center's there. Before the daycare center was a real estate business, and those weren't really a problem. But, a commercial business that has traffic all day long, could be heavy traffic in that area, just does not seem like a responsible thing to have happen. So, with that said, I spoke with other people in the neighborhood, so that I knew, got a good feel for how people felt. I have a petition with 116 names on it, both township and city. Some of those were two people and one residence, but there's over 80 residents, residential areas representing residential people. So anyhow, I think I'm certainly not the only one that feels that way. I know the neighborhood watch person is very concerned about it, and hopefully will be here next time. So, with that said, I hope, if you haven't gone up and taken a look, you'll go up and take a look at the area and see what I'm talking about. And, you know, a lot of people have been there a lot of years and don't have options to move, and I think it can, I think it can be an office area. I don't object to an office with not a lot, you know, that wouldn't have all that traffic. But, I do object to a business such as the ones I named being in that area. With that said, thank you so much for listening.
Thank you. I'd like to call, ma'am. I would definitely remember your name. Virginia Beach, the person, not the place. Anyone else for this first section?
Go ahead.
Some, one of you two, go.
I'm Dick Icecraft. I have property on Ballard Avenue 506, and I got a junky neighbor and a kind of a over parking in front of the place. He's got, he's got five cars in the front and one in the back, and the lots are only, I don't know whether it's, they're 45 or 50 feet wide. And I've been told that one way I can do it is put in a driveway. But, why should I have to put a driveway in in order to have room to park two cars? He's parking down on me, and on my niece on the east side, he parks his pickup on her side. And then he, like today, come wheeling in there, and he's got a room enough in front of these two cars he's got backed up to the house. He could have pulled the truck down in front of there, but no, he perceives it's kind of a game, I think he's playing. And I've been up to the maintenance, property maintenance people a couple of times, and I've been to the mayor's office, but I haven't caught him. And I think something other ought to be done. And his backyard is junky. I don't think he'd get a car in there if he wanted to. So, another thing, this cat business, they got cats, and they're over there, and they're using my yard for a litter box. And I think the way to get rid of this cat business is just do like you did to dogs, but just substitute cat for dog, you know? And they can put a leash on their cat and walk it if they want, or keep it in a pen or whatever. But, I don't think they ought to be allowed to run all over the neighborhood head and use my yard as a bathroom. But, I'll say this, Toby, when, if they do change it, why give him enough money to buy his tranquilizer bullets, so he can get rid of them? If people don't want to take good care of their animals, why... Another thing, like all the junk, this here mosquitoes, they say it's coming farther north and it's going to be hitting us, and the more junk you got around, the more mosquitoes you're going to have. So, I'd say the city ought to get on top of it before it really breaks out. That's all I got to say.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Icecraft.
David Green, 1791 Olympic Court. There are two things I just wanted to speak briefly about. One is, the Freedom School is sponsoring a second year of film series that begins on September 20. You're all invited, and the public's invited. The film is called Harvest of Empire, and it's a thorough discussion of immigration in the United States, and the issues that people have coming from lots of different countries, and how that has affected their home countries and also their lives here. And for those, for those of you who may not think that's something you're interested in, I would just argue from a teacher's perspective that we're never too old to learn. Life is supposed to be, to me, a lifelong learning experience, so I would ask and invite you to come. So, that's just a pleasurable thing. The second thing is the question of housing in Newark. And for the past four years, or maybe even longer than that, people have been going from the Committee on Housing in Newark to eviction court, which takes place every two weeks. Some of you know this. I don't know if many of you have been there, but are in different roles that you've played in relationship to that. But, two weeks ago, or week and a half ago, there were 83 cases in eviction court on Thursday. It takes place on a Thursday morning. The next eviction court is this Thursday coming, which is the 8th, and there are 63 cases that are up for eviction. Those numbers should be, and are in fact, kind of startling and alarming, and should be a concern of the city. There are, most of the people that we see in eviction court are people who work, but work at minimum wage, temporary or part-time work. Some are disabled, some are not working at all, but most are employed but earn too little to continue to support rent, so they easily fall behind if they have medical, transportation, or other kinds of crises in their lives, or family crises. So, the issue is a very important one, I think, for Newark. Because I would guess, though I don't have accurate statistics on these, that while the employment level has probably increased in the county, or factually has increased, that the poverty level has actually gone up as well. Because employment is very important and essential, but it's a question of what is a living wage and what can you survive on. And I would also say, a common expression that you've all heard is, "There but for fortune, go you and I." And I would sort of emphasize that, that it's not a bleeding heart kind of situation. It's much more of a recognition that we could easily be in eviction court, whether we think we can or not. So, I want to urge the city to look at the question of evictions, increasing evictions. People who are being evicted have very little on their side when they go to eviction court. I mean, almost universally, or in majority of cases, they've fallen behind in rent, which is a justifiable reason for eviction, according to the law. But, they also don't have any kind of legal protection. They have legal services, when legal services can spare somebody to come or deal with their case. And increasingly, as legal services budgets have been cut, they cover fewer and fewer people in Lincoln County. So, they may handle one out of 83 cases if you're there when they have that many. So that the question of how people are represented is very important here, because almost universally, the landlords who are in eviction court, and they're not all bad at all, but they have lawyers, and they have an understanding of what the law is. In most cases, not all. But, so it puts the tenant who is, you can't tell the circumstance that they're living under, but it puts the tenant in a very disadvantageous position, a very unequal position. If you go to eviction court, you can see this clearly, I think. We have many, many times. So, I would urge the city to consider the possibility of having a committee in city government or with the community that looked into this question of why it is that so many people are being evicted in Lincoln County. Thank you.
Mr. Green? Next, we'll go to ordinances on the second reading.
Only one term per person.
Oh, yeah. Does anybody in here look at other cities, how they do with parking and trash?
I can answer that. Yes, we have, and we've gone down that very few times. And the parking, correct me if I'm wrong, but there's a 48-hour window that you can park on the city street without moving the car, without being an issue, even though it's, even though it's right in front of your house, it's still a city street. So, you can park there for 48 hours if they don't move the car legally.
Yeah. But, what happens, it just snowballs back up the street, and the guy that comes home late, he's out of the parking lot.
Right. I get you.
I think Jim's ought to look and see what other people is doing, or at least try to change it in some form. And I want to thank Mrs. Hall for talking to me. That's what I want to...
Okay. Thank you. All right. Let's go to ordinances on the second reading, 16-32.
Ordinance 16-32 by Mrs. Floyd, Mr. Cos, Mr. Marby, Mr. Raff, Mr. Johnson, and Mr. Frazier. And ordinance amending the position classification, pay range, and position authorization tables of the Department of Public Service, Division of Street Maintenance, and Traffic Control by creating two traffic-street-worker positions.
You've heard the second reading of 16-32. What is your wish?
Mr. President.
Mr. Bub?
Make a motion to adopt ordinance 16-32.
Motion by Mr. Bub.
Second.
Second by Mr. Johnson. Do we have any discussion on 16-32? Seeing none, audit, please call the roll, vote.
Mr. Raff?
Yes.
Mr. Ralletta?
Yes.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mr. Bub?
Yes.
Mr. Cos?
Yes.
Mrs. Floyd?
Yes.
Mr. Frazier?
Yes.
Ms. Hall?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
And Mr. Marby?
Yes.
16-32 passes 10-0. Next, we've got ordinances on the first reading, 16-33.
Ordinance 16-33 by Mr. Raff, Mr. Cos, Mrs. Floyd, Mr. Marby, Mr. Johnson. And ordinance changing the zoning classification of certain real property generally described as 320 North Vernon Avenue, City of Newark, Lincoln County, Ohio, from that of single-family residence, RL low-density zoning district to AD agricultural zoning district.
We'll refer 16-33 to the Planning Commission. Next, we've got 16-34.
Ordinance 16-34 by Mrs. Floyd, Mr. Cos, Mr. Marby, Mr. Raff, Mr. Johnson. And ordinance amending the position classification, pay range, and position authorization tables of the Department of Public Service, Division of Traffic Control, and Division of Street Maintenance by creating one additional classification of Streets Traffic Control Operations Manager.
16-34 will be held two weeks for a second reading. Next, we've got resolutions on the second reading, 16-66.
Resolution 16-66 by Mr. Marby, Mr. Cos, Mrs. Floyd, Mr. Johnson, Mr. Raff, and Mr. Frazier. A resolution authorizing and directing the mayor of the city of Newark to prepare and submit applications to the Department of Homeland Security for fiscal year 2016 Fire Act grant programs in support of training programs, equipment purchases, funding for personnel, fire prevention, and fire safety programs throughout the city.
You've heard the second reading of 16-66. What is your wish?
Mr. President.
Mr. Marby?
Make a motion to adopt resolution 16-66.
Motion. Motion by Mr. Marby, second by Mr. Cos. Is there any discussion on 16-66? Seeing none, audit, please call the roll, vote.
Mr. Raff?
Yes.
Mr. Ralletta?
Yes.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mr. Bub?
Yes.
Mr. Cos?
Yes.
Mrs. Floyd?
Yes.
Mr. Frazier?
Yes.
Ms. Hall?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
And Mr. Marby?
Yes.
16-66 passes 10-0. Next, we have 16-68.
Resolution 16-68 by Mr. Marby, Mr. Cos, Mrs. Floyd, Mr. Johnson, Mr. Raff. A resolution appropriating monies for the current expenses of the municipal corporation.
You've heard the second reading of 16-68. What is your wish?
Mr. President.
Mr. Marby?
Make a motion to adopt resolution 16-68.
Motion by Mr. Marby, second by Mrs. Floyd. Do we have any discussion on 16-68? Seeing none, audit, please call the roll, vote.
Mr. Raff?
Yes.
Mr. Ralletta?
Yes.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mr. Bub?
Yes.
Mr. Cos?
Yes.
Mrs. Floyd?
Yes.
Mr. Frazier?
Yes.
Ms. Hall?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
And Mr. Marby?
Yes.
16-68 passes 10-0. Next, on the second reading, we have 16-69.
Resolution 16-69 by Mr. Raff, Mr. Cos, Mrs. Floyd, Mr. Marby, Mr. Johnson, and Mr. Frazier. A resolution authorizing and directing the Director of Public Service of the city of Newark, Ohio, to advertise for bids and enter into contract for polymer pour-use and wastewater treatment processes.
You've heard the second reading of 16-69. What is your wish?
Mr. President.
Mr. Raff?
Make a motion to adopt 16-69.
Motion by Mr. Raff.
Second.
Second by Mr. Frazier. Do we have any discussion on 16-69? Seeing none, audit, please call the roll, vote.
Mr. Raff?
Yes.
Mr. Ralletta?
Yes.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mr. Bub?
Yes.
Mr. Cos?
Yes.
Mrs. Floyd?
Yes.
Mr. Frazier?
Yes.
Ms. Hall?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
And Mr. Marby?
Yes.
16-69 passes 10-0. Next, we have 16-70.
Resolution 16-70 by Mr. Raff, Mr. Cos, Mrs. Floyd, Mr. Marby, Mr. Johnson, and Mr. Frazier. A resolution authorizing the Director of Public Service to prepare and submit applications to participate in Ohio Public Works Commission State Capital Improvements Program and to execute contracts as required.
You've heard the second reading of 16-70. What is your wish?
Mr. President. Mr. Raff? Make a motion to adopt 16-70. Second.
Motion by Mr. Raff, second by Mr. Frazier. Any discussion on 16-70? Seeing none, audit, please call the roll, vote.
Mr. Raff?
Yes.
Mr. Ralletta?
Yes.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mr. Bub?
Yes.
Mr. Cos?
Yes.
Mrs. Floyd?
Yes.
Mr. Frazier?
Yes.
Ms. Hall?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
And Mr. Marby?
Yes.
16-70 passes 10-0. And finally, resolutions on the second reading, 16-71.
Resolution 16-71 by Mr. Raff, Mr. Cos, Mrs. Floyd, Mr. Marby, Mr. Johnson, and Mr. Frazier. A resolution authorizing and directing the Director of Public Service to advertise for bids and enter into contracts subject to the appropriation of funds for various construction projects.
You've heard the second reading of 16-71. What is your wish?
Mr. President.
Mr. Raff?
Make a motion to adopt 16-71.
Motion. Motion by Mr. Raff, second by Mr. Cos. Any discussion on 16-71? Seeing none, audit, please call the roll, vote.
Mr. Raff?
Yes.
Mr. Ralletta?
Yes.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mr. Bub?
Yes.
Mr. Cos?
Yes.
Mrs. Floyd?
Yes.
Mr. Frazier?
Yes.
Ms. Hall?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
And Mr. Marby?
Yes.
And 16-71 also passes 10-0. Now, we move on to resolutions on the first reading, 16-72. Now we move on to resolutions on the first reading, sixteen dash seventy-two.
Resolution sixteen dash seventy-two by Mr. Marmee, Mrs. Floyd, Mr. Cos, Mr. Rath. A resolution authorizing and directing the auditor of the City of Newark to pay bills on behalf of Division of Police pursuant to Section 5705.41D, then and now certification, and declaring an emergency.
Sixteen dash seventy-two is on the first reading, but it is an emergency, what does you wish?
Mr. President.
Mr. Marmee.
Make a motion to adopt resolution sixteen dash seventy-two.
Second. Motion by Mr. Marmee, second by Mrs. Floyd. Any discussion on sixteen dash seventy-two? See, none, auditors call a roll of votes.
Mr. Rath.
Yes.
Mr. Riletta.
Yes.
Mr. Blake.
Yes.
Mr. Bub.
Yes.
Mr. Cos.
Yes.
Mrs. Floyd.
Yes.
Mr. Frazier.
Yes.
Ms. Hall.
Yes.
Mr. Johnson.
Yes.
And Mr. Marmee.
Yes.
Sixteen dash seventy-two passes ten zero. Next, on the first reading, we have sixteen dash seventy-three.
Resolution sixteen dash seventy-three by Mr. Marmee, Mrs. Floyd, Mr. Cos, Mr. Rath. A resolution appropriating monies for the current expenses of the municipal corporation.
Sixteen dash seventy-three will be held for a second reading for two weeks. Next, we have sixteen dash seventy-four.
Resolution sixteen dash seventy-four by Mr. Rath, Mrs. Floyd, Mr. Cos, Mr. Marmee. A resolution authorizing and directing the Director of Public Service of the City of Newark, Ohio, to enter into contract without competitive bidding for the repair of a heat-exchanger system for the anaerobic digesters at the wastewater treatment plant, and declaring an emergency.
Sixteen dash seventy-four is on the first reading, but it is an emergency, what does you wish?
Mr. President.
Mr. Rath.
Make a motion to adopt sixteen dash seventy-four.
Motion. Motion by Mr. Rath, second by Mr. Johnson. Any discussion on sixteen dash seventy?
Mr. President.
Mr. Rath.
This is a piece of equipment that's been pieced together and thought could last a longer period of time, but has come to the conclusion it is not, and it's the reason for the emergency.
Thank you, Mr. Rath, anyone else? Audits call a roll of votes.
Mr. Rath.
Yes.
Mr. Riletta.
Yes.
Mr. Blake.
Yes.
Mr. Bub.
Yes.
Mr. Cos.
Yes.
Mrs. Floyd.
Yes.
Mr. Frazier.
Yes.
Ms. Hall.
Yes.
Mr. Johnson.
Yes.
And Mr. Marmee.
Yes.
Sixteen dash seventy-four passes ten zero. Next, we have sixteen dash seventy-five on the first reading.
Resolution sixteen dash seventy-five by Mrs. Floyd, Mr. Cos, Mr. Rath. A resolution authorizing and directing the Director of Public Service of the City of Newark, Ohio, to enter into a lease agreement with Park National Bank for the lease purchase of one medic unit for the Division of Fire.
Sixteen dash seventy-five will be held two weeks for a second reading. Next, we have sixteen dash seventy-six.
Resolution sixteen dash seventy-six by Mr. Rath, Mrs. Floyd, Mr. Cos, Mr. Marmee. A resolution authorizing the conveyance of certain real property now owned by the City of Newark, Ohio, to Newark Development Partners as its agent for industrial, commercial, distribution, and research development.
Sixteen dash seventy-six will be held for two weeks for a second reading. Next, we have sixteen dash seventy-seven.
Resolution sixteen dash seventy-seven by Mr. Rath, Mrs. Floyd, Mr. Cos, Mr. Marmee. A resolution authorizing and directing the Director of Public Service to accept bids and sell certain surplus personal property now owned by the City of Newark, Ohio, and declaring that such property is no longer needed for any municipal purpose, and declaring an emergency.
Sixteen dash seventy-seven is on the first reading, but it is an emergency, what does you wish?
Mr. President.
Mr. Rath.
Make a motion to adopt sixteen dash seventy-seven.
Motion by Mr. Rath, second by Mr. Frazier. Do we have any discussion on sixteen dash seventy-seven? Mr. President. Mr. Rath.
This has become a quarterly event, and it is necessary for us to pass the emergency, pass this under the emergency clause to be able to advertise for the option in time.
Thank you, Mr. Rath, anyone else? Audits call a roll of votes.
Mr. Rath.
Yes.
Mr. Riletta.
Yes.
Mr. Blake.
Yes.
Mr. Bub.
Yes.
Mr. Cos.
Yes.
Mrs. Floyd.
Yes.
Mr. Frazier.
Yes.
Ms. Hall.
Yes.
Mr. Johnson.
Yes.
And Mr. Marmee.
Yes.
Sixteen dash seventy-seven passes ten zero. Still on the first reading, next, we have sixteen dash seventy-eight.
Resolution sixteen dash seventy-eight by Mrs. Floyd, Mr. Cos, Mr. Rath. A resolution appropriating monies for the current expenses of the municipal corporation.
Sixteen dash seventy-eight will be held two weeks. Next, we have sixteen dash eight. What does your wish, Mr. Marmee? Or who is going to take that one?
I'll make a motion to adopt.
I'll make a motion to wait.
Two-day review. Second by Mr. Frazier.
Yeah, I'd love to.
Mr. Marmee.
It's capital improvement, so I think if it says expedited, they must have a reason.
Audits call a roll of votes, two-day review.
Mr. Rath.
Yes.
Mr. Riletta.
Yes.
Mr. Blake.
Yes.
Mr. Bub.
Yes.
Mr. Cos.
Yes.
Mrs. Floyd.
Yes.
Mr. Frazier.
Yes.
Ms. Hall.
Yes.
Mr. Johnson.
Yes.
And Mr. Marmee.
Yes.
Sixteen dash seventy-eight passes ten zero. Thank you, Mr. Marmee. Next, we have sixteen dash eighty.
Resolution sixteen dash eighty by Mr. Rath, Mr. Cos, Mr. Marmee, and Mrs. Floyd. It's a final resolution for the project that consists of the resurfacing of State Route 13 and related work lying within the City of Newark and declaring an emergency.
Again, sixteen dash eighty is on the first reading, but it is an emergency, what does you wish?
Mr. President.
Mr. Rath.
I'd like to make a motion to adopt sixteen dash eighty.
Motion by Mr. Rath.
Second.
Second by Mr. Frazier. Is there any discussion on sixteen dash eighty?
Mr. President.
Mr. Rath.
This has an emergency clause coinciding with timing through payments and to adopt.
Anyone else? See, none, auditors call a roll of votes.
Mr. Rath.
Yes.
Mr. Riletta.
Yes.
Mr. Blake.
Yes.
Mr. Bub.
Yes.
Mr. Cos.
Yes.
Mrs. Floyd.
Yes.
Mr. Frazier.
Yes.
Ms. Hall.
Yes.
Mr. Johnson.
Yes.
And Mr. Marmee.
Yes.
Sixteen dash eighty passes ten zero. Next, we have sixteen dash eighty-one.
Resolution sixteen dash eighty-one by Mrs. Floyd, Mr. Cos, Mr. Rath. A resolution authorizing and directing the mayor of the City of Newark to prepare and submit applications to the Ohio Department of Environmental Protection Agency for fiscal year 2016 Diesel Emissions Reduction Grant Program for Equipment Replacement, Repower, retrofit, and anti-idle.
Sixteen dash eighty-one will be held for two weeks. And last this evening, we have sixteen dash eighty-two.
Resolution sixteen dash eighty-two by Mrs. Floyd and Mr. Rath. A resolution to support the application for an Ohio Historic Preservation Tax Credit Award for the rehabilitation of the real property located at and known as 112 West Main Street, Newark, Ohio, and declaring an emergency.
Sixteen dash eighty-two is on the first reading, but it is an emergency, what does you wish?
Mr. President.
Mrs. Floyd.
Move to adopt sixteen eighty-two.
Motion. Motion by Mr. Blake, second by Mr. Frazier. Do we have any discussion on sixteen dash eighty-two?
Mr. President.
Mr. Blake.
We just want to be supportive of the efforts to be able to rehab and do some things at the old West Main Intermediate School property, and so I think this time around, hopefully we have a good chance of getting this tax credit for the owner.
Mr. Blake, anyone else? Audits call a roll of votes.
Mr. Rath.
Yes.
Mr. Riletta.
Yes.
Mr. Blake.
Yes.
Mr. Bub.
Yes.
Mr. Cos.
Yes.
Mrs. Floyd.
Yes.
Mr. Frazier.
Yes.
Ms. Hall.
Yes.
Mr. Johnson.
Yes.
And Mr. Marmee.
Yes.
Sixteen dash eighty-two passes ten zero. And that concludes our legislation this evening. Thank you for your attention. Next, we have our second opportunity for comments from citizens, the same rule of power, and again, this is not a debate with councils, this is your opportunity to be heard. Do we have anyone? Anyone from administration this evening who'd like to speak? Honorable Law Director Sassen.
Thank you, Mr. President, I was going to give the sports report tonight, but since Williams is not here to do the weather report, I'll pass.
And Ole Miss didn't win. Thank you, Mr. Sassen.
Oh!
Clemson did.
I'm sorry, I didn't mean to say that out loud. Mayor Hall.
I will pass this evening, thank you.
Mr. Rath.
I'll call a service committee meeting, and pass.
Thank you, Mr. Rath, Mr. Roretta.
Thank you, I'll pass.
Thank you, Mr. Roretta. Mr. Blake.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just a few items I wanted to mention to all of council. The mayor and I had met with the school advisors, it was here recently, I think it was a week ago, two weeks ago, I can't remember now, but our first Newark Youth Council will be on September fifteenth, and so this will be our third year kicking off this program, and looking forward to having a new group of teenagers join us to learn about city government, so excited about working with the mayor on that project. And then another exciting project that's happening on the seventeenth of September is another collaboration with the mayor and his administration, is that the South North Civic Association will be opening up our new home. So it's a meeting house, celebration on the seventeenth at noon, so we'll have a picnic and, you know, sort of a community meal. There'll be music, entertainment, family activities, and things. And then one o'clock will be the time for remarks. The mayor's going to say a few words. Dan Delauter from Park National Bank will be saying a few words. Adam Weinberg from Dennison will be saying a few words, and Marsha Downs will be sharing some reflections about their support of the Civic Association and what this new facility means for the growth of the organization and for providing good opportunities for the neighborhood and bringing attention to the south end of our community. The other item I wanted to mention is that last week, I attended the overdose awareness day, which was held at the Canal Market District Pavilion. And I just want to say that I'm really proud of the people that organized that event. It was parents of people that are suffering with the disease of addiction, and I think it brought a lot of awareness, a lot of education to battle stigmas associated with people that are fighting the disease of addiction. And I'm very proud of our police chief. You know, our chief has started a program that's very rare in our state, at where it's looking at people fighting addiction as patients versus as criminals, and I think it's a lot of good strides and a lot of good collaborations and relationships were developed that day, and so I just want to make a few comments related to that. But in fighting addiction and drug addiction in our community, I think it relates to a lot of what Mr. Green was mentioning, his comments, we've got to look at poverty rate, we've got to look at what people are working one or two jobs, but they're still living in poverty, so what are those wages to get someone out of, and to be able to support their families and their livelihood? But then we also have mental health issues that go along with drug addiction, so all those issues need to be discussed more publicly, and I just was proud to be there for that day to bring awareness to those issues. With that, I'll pass, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Blake, Mr. Bub.
Pass.
Thank you, Mr. Bub, and Mr. Cos.
I just want to say the Labor Day Parade was a huge success, and it was a really nice event, great weather, great day.
I'll pass, thank you, Mr. Cos, Mrs. Floyd.
I had a street committee on Monday. I too wanted to say the Labor Day Parade was very good, and I want to commend Jenny Beach for doing all the work that she has done to give the viewpoint of her community. I know we will be discussing it more in two weeks, but I just want to commend you on,